I see she's on mute, but. Mr. Witt, are you there?
I'm here.
Mr. Green?
Here.
And Mr. Middlestat?
Excused. All right, thank you. Now we'll move into the open forum. Mr. Richards?
Good evening.
Good evening.
Dennis Richards, 9980 Arnold Road, Ira, Michigan. Good evening and thank you allowing me to speak tonight. I have a few questions that I was looking for some answers to. On Thursday around 8:00 PM, I was driving up County Line Road and noticed some exchange students outside of McDonald Elementary School, as well as some walking in and out of the school. On March 16th, the governor issued an executive order that closed all schools, including boarding schools. Can someone explain to me what the policy and procedures are that we have in place currently with the exchange students regarding COVID-19? I would also like to know if the students are staying here until the contractual return date. Keep in mind, with the contract with China Link, the district is responsible for health insurance for the exchange students, co-pays, and balance for the exchange students. The district would be responsible for all medical costs, not to mention the moral obligation to the lives of the children. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. That's so. That's only open forums we had tonight. We will go toward. All right. Well, I guess I'll just. I don't see. Tim is. Riley is trying to get on right now, I know. Do you see her on yet? I'm looking. All right. She's having some little bit of troubles. We'll move to. We're going to do the student congress recognition when she gets on. She's on now? Okay, we'll move on. We'll go into bills payable with Robin. Here, unmute her.
Can you hear me?
Yep.
Okay, good evening. Before you, you have the accounts payable summary for the month of April 30th, 2020. The general fund total is $753,941. Total cumulative funds are $903,137. Does the board have any questions in regards to the detailed summary that was provided to you?
Are there any questions from the board? See and none. Is there a motion to accept the bills payable for April 2020 as presented?
I'll make the motion.
Motion by Ms. Headershot. Second by Mr. Moses. Vote by roll.
If that was green, it's yes.
It was. Mr. Witt?
Yes.
Mr. Moses?
Yes.
Burke Meyer, yes. Ms. Akavati-Henderson?
Yes.
And Mr. Darrell?
Yes. Motion passes. All right. Before we get into personnel, our student congress representative, Ms. Riley Arnold, is on now. So I'm going to turn it over to Todd to give a little presentation.
Riley, have you joined us? If you can, please just say hi so everybody can see you.
Yeah, I don't see her in the list yet.
It's, I think it's Laura Arnold, is it? Lori, sorry.
There she is.
It's a little bit different name than we were searching for.
Can you guys hear me?
Yes.
Okay, yeah, that's my mom's name.
All right. I just guessed and unmuted that one, so.
Hi.
Hi, Riley. Well, thank you for joining us tonight. I just want to update everybody a little bit about Riley and thank her for her service. So Riley has served on the student council for three years. This year, she became the Student Congress Board of Education Representative, in which she attended our meetings and provided district-wide student congress report. Riley will be attending the University of Central Florida in the fall and intends to major in marketing. On behalf of the administration, the Board of Education, we thank Riley for her hard work and dedication and wish her the very best of luck in her future endeavors. A plaque will be purchased and mailed to Riley at her home as a small token of our appreciation. Thank you very much, Riley. We really appreciate your contribution.
Thank you so much. I really.
Thank you, Riley. Now it's, you got like a five-minute speech prepared, right?
No, definitely not.
No. All right, good luck at college and thank you for being the representative in all you did this year.
Riley, one other thing I want to share with you is Superintendent Woodside hoped to be here tonight. Unfortunately, he has a family matter that he needs to attend to. But he wanted me to also thank you very much for your service.
Oh, thank you guys so much. That means a lot. It's definitely been a really cool experience. Being at the board meetings and stuff, I really didn't know much about what congress was. And then I started going to the meetings and then the board meetings. And I was like, wow, this is a lot. But it was a really cool experience, a really good learning experience. It taught me a lot. And thank you, everyone who was so nice and welcoming to me. I appreciate it.
You're welcome.
All right.
Congratulations.
Yep. All right. We will. And you know you got to stay on all meeting and, you know, you're going to be right in the middle.
Oh, yeah.
All right. Go to personnel with Ms. Laura. Oh, unmute her.
Good evening.
There we go. All right.
Okay, so the first matter on the agenda under personnel is the administrative contract renewals, which you have before you.
All right, is there a motion to approve the contract extension as presented of the administration? Administrative contracts?
I will make the motion.
Motion by Ms. Headershot. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Right, seconded by Mr. Witt. Is there? Well, first, is there any discussion?
Mr. President, the CBA for these groups of administrators doesn't expire until June 30th of 2021. Why is this motion on our agenda tonight?
You asking, do you want me to reply?
Yeah. That would be great.
Okay. Um, you're required each year to take action on administrator contracts. Failure to do so automatically renews them. And if you go to page five of the local Teamster Local 214 contract, you'll see under item 7.08, it states that our contracts are a three-year. We're on a three-year renewal cycle. So that is why they are extended out for three years.
So a yes vote extends it out three years. No action by the board extends it out one year, correct?
Well, our contract extends it for three years. But yes, if no action by the board, it's automatically renewed. But we have a contract that states it's renewed for three years annually.
How, how will this extension affect my ability to possibly make changes in the very beginning of next fiscal year with relation to salaries and currently employed people that are in this in this group?
Um, I'm not sure that I understand.
I can answer that question, Laura. So Patrick, I think what you're getting at is if, if finances necessitated a layoff, would we be able to do that? The answer, is that the question you're asking?
Yes.
Okay. The answer would be yes, the board would be able to move forward and administration would be able to move forward in layoffs if they were, if they were so required by the budget.
Can I ask another question under, it used to be a two-year contract? Now it's a three-year contract? If we do not vote to renew, then how many years are left? Just two or is it just one?
Let's say. We would be renewed, we would be till 2022. Would be our, be what we're renewed to. Because last year it would have been renewed to 2022. This year it goes out three years, which would be 2023.
So let's say.
It is language in our contract.
Yes, but I'm just looking for clarification.
Okay.
Let's say there was an administrator that we felt should not be rolled over here, voted on. So we said no to the rollover right now. How many years would he have? It used to be one to the, they'd have left. Finish out the year you're in, they had one more, but then it was an automatic leave. What happens after this, this year if it's not renewed?
They would. They would. I'm sorry. So they would be, they would have a contract until June 30th, 2022.
Okay, so that, now they have two more years, even if you do not renew them. But right now, if we do renew, their contract then goes out to 2023?
Yes.
Three years, yep.
Okay, I'm just.
I think I must have misunderstood. I thought you said no action by the board adds one year from June of 2020 to June of 2021. Now you're saying it's two years?
Well, last year, these contracts were renewed through 2022.
So now they will be renewed through 2023. Unless we voted for an administrator not to be renewed, then their contract would end in 2022. Correct?
Yes.
Okay. I think we cleared that. Seems to be kind of clear. Is there any other discussion on this? What's that?
As much.
Yeah, yeah. So.
Well, does, does, do you, do you need further clarification?
No.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
Oh, Steve's, all right. I just want to, the record show Steve is in, hey, Steve, you want to unmute your? I'll unmute him.
There you go.
All right. Do you have anything on this motion, Steve? Did you catch it?
Yeah, Joe. Updated, he made a motion to extend as presented.
Yes, the administrative contracts.
Yep.
Okay. Vote by roll.
Mr. Green?
No.
Mr. Witt?
Yes.
Mr. Middlestat?
Yes.
Mr. Moses?
Yes.
Burke Meyer, no. Ms. Akavati-Henderson?
Yes.
And Mr. Darrell?
Yes. Motion passes. Next up? Laura?
Okay, I have before you the teachers, probationary teachers who are progressing towards tenure and the teachers that have completed either. Teachers who were two years at another district, or I'm sorry, were tenured at another district and completed two successful years at Anchor Bay. Or the teachers who have completed their five-year probationary period with the last three years of evaluation ratings being effective or higher.
Okay, is there a motion to approve the tenure and probationary recommendations as presented?
I'll move.
I'll second.
Mr. Witt, seconded by Ms. Headershot. Is there any discussion? Mr. Green?
Yeah, I just need some clarity, Mr. President. So these folks have had their reviews and had good reviews for the 1920 school year already presented to them?
We do not have any teachers who have an effectiveness rating that has declined. So though they haven't been given their official evaluation yet, we have no one whose evaluation rating declined. So these teachers are all either effective or highly effective.
So I understood you said that they've had that rating for three years? Was I, perhaps I missed something? Is there some one and two-year people on here?
So I'm sorry if you misunderstood. The teachers who have achieved tenure have had it an effectiveness rating of effective or highly effective for the last three years. In order to achieve tenure, you have to have three years of an effectiveness rating of effective or higher.
So we're actually just talking about the ones that have achieved tenure, not the four, three, two, or first year complete? Got it?
Some of them, I mean, your four years could have had three years of effective or highly effective. But this is just progressing them on their track to tenure.
I understand.
Five-year process.
I understand.
Okay, any other discussion? See and none. We'll vote by, was, Lisa, I seen you were unmuted. Was, did you have something to say? Or ask, I mean?
I was just kind of along the same lines, wondering. Did, so you're saying it's like a two-part thing? Then you're saying that they, they met, they had three years effective or highly effective out of, and then obviously they have to move along this track for five years to achieve tenure. So these people have done both of these things regardless of the 19, whatever their 1920 evaluation is.
So yes, they've either completed five years as a probationary teacher with Anchor Bay or they were tenured teachers elsewhere and have completed two successful years with Anchor Bay with the most recent three years being effective or highly effective. And as I stated previously, no one's effectiveness rating is declining this year. So these teachers are all effective or highly effective teachers.
They would also have been on a plan for improvement
Yes.
for this year if they would not be, if they were not to be considered for tenure. And none of the teachers, that's what you're saying, that none of them were on that track. So they did not have a plan for improvement. It is assumed they would get the effective rating regardless, so they had the three years.
You can take, it can take you more than five years to achieve tenure. If you were effective, effective, minimally effective, then you've got to start over. You need three more years. You have to, your last three years have to be rated effective or highly effective.
So, so we're assuming that all these people are remaining effective?
I don't think we're assuming. I think we have the data and we know these teachers are our IDP teachers. We, we know that nobody's effectiveness rating is declining. So it, they are either effective or highly effective.
What she's saying by not declining means that they're going to move forward.
Right.
In a positive direction.
Okay.
All right, any other discussion? We'll vote by roll.
Mr. Green?
Yes.
Mr. Witt?
Yes.
Your middle stat?
Yes.
Mr. Moses?
Yes.
Burke Meyer, yes. Ms. Akavati-Henderson?
Yes.
And Mr. Darrell?
Yes. Motion passes. All right. Ms. Laura? Move on to the new, new hires?
Yeah.
No, isn't there one for counselors?
Yes, it's their ancillary.
Yeah, the, yep.
So this is a recommendation for your counselors, your school psychologists, speech paths, and social workers for continuing contracts for the 2021 school year. These teachers are, these professionals are part of our teachers' union, but they, not all of them are certified teachers, but licensed in their area of expertise.
Okay, is there a motion to approve the recommendations of continuing contracts as presented?
I'll move.
I'll make the, I'll second.
All right, motion by Mr. Witt, seconded by Mr. Headershot, Mrs. Henderson. Is there?
Thank you.
Sorry, is there any discussion? All right, see and none. We'll vote by roll.
Mr. Green?
Yes.
Mr. Witt?
Yes.
Mr. Middlestat?
Yes.
Mr. Moses?
Yes.
Burke Meyer, yes. Ms. Akavati-Henderson?
Yes.
And Mr. Darrell?
Yes. All right, motion passes. Right? Now we're on to the new hires.
Now we're on to the new hire. So we have before you, for your approval, a halftime teaching position. So this position was vacated by our previous football coach. It is the same position that he held. It's a halftime teaching position. Our candidate has over 35 years' experience as an educator. And you have the, so the AD and the principal would hire the coaching position. What we have before you tonight is the teaching position because the board approves all hires for teachers.
Okay. You guys have before you all his recommendation. You have his resume. I guess to start with, is there any discussion on Mr. Gianoni?
Uh, go ahead.
Well, I, I have a number of concerns. I don't know the gentleman, obviously. And he seems to have a number of years of experience. But my first main concern is the fact that he would be coming in at step 12 on the teacher's scale. And I have questions about that. Has that fact been shared with the ABEA president?
No.
She's on here, right?
Not. There was a representative of hers. There was, one of the teachers, Linda Rand was on. I don't see her, but was this shared? Because this has never been done before.
Ever.
I think that step four, I could be wrong, but I think step four is probably the highest we have ever gone in offering steps to anyone. And that has been for critical positions like advanced calculus, chemistry, just very, very difficult positions to fill. I do not, I do not, do not feel comfortable when we have someone, this is a part-time PE position, when we are in the budgetary mode that we are in. We do not know what the future holds. We know that we are probably going to be losing funding. We know that we are automatically going to be down enrollment because we are losing those students that are coming from the Mandarin program. I don't know when the dust settles for us to be hiring at this point a teaching position where we do not know what structures are going to be. Could this be a position that might be filled with one teacher taking a six-hour and just filling it for $12,000 a year instead of equivalent of $45,000? Which is about half of what the salary would be. And are there benefits connected to this, Laura?
So there are benefits. When you have your football coach in the building, there are benefits with that in regards to behavior and performance of your athletes.
I think the benefits of. Unemployment benefits for Mr. Gianoni.
I'm sorry, could you repeat that?
I think she's talking about fringe benefits.
Healthcare.
Healthcare, pension, that type of stuff.
So he would be offered that. It's at a, I believe it's at a prorated rate according to the contract. I'm not sure if he would take those benefits or not. That I don't know. And that is not something we consider when we make offers for hire. Honestly, it's, that's part of the job. And so it's always assumed if they need it, they take it. If they don't, you know, they don't.
All right, so how many hours a day is he teaching?
So we would have a schedule of three hours a day. It's a halftime, .5 FTE.
Yes, but how many sections does he teach?
So he has a prep and two classes.
So, and usually teachers are teaching five hours?
Yes.
So he's getting one hour of prep for two hours of teaching time?
Their contract requires every teacher to have a prep hour.
I understand that. But he's only teaching, he's getting the same prep hour as someone that would be teaching five hours a day, correct?
He is. That's, all our halftime teachers get the same prep.
Okay.
Would be teaching five hours, yeah.
All right, and has there been? Go ahead.
That's what Coach Powell has.
Who, is that, is this, is that you? Why, Mr. Moses, all right. Go ahead.
So Murray, basically. Mr. Gianoni isn't your run-of-the-mill teacher. He's a, he's a three-time state champion. He is a highly sought-after coach that left a school making over 100 grand a year. You weren't going to get him at step four. He's going to retain kids, five kids that I know of immediately. That's five kids you're going to lose if, if we don't hire them. That's one of the main reasons, and that's just that I know. And when he left after building another program, he went there, a lot of our kids followed him to the, to the school that he was at. That may come back. This, like I said, I understand your complete situation. I believe that the main goal here is to retain students to build our football program. And everybody knows, and I know it's an academic institution, but if you look at all the schools and all the data, the ones that have the best sports programs tend to have the most kids. I believe this hire is going to save teachers' jobs. And that's, that's the main reason.
But we don't have any.
As far as your thing with step four, I happen to know we did hire a mass teacher at step six, which was, uh, which took. Yeah, he came from Cardinal Mooney. It was one of the first board meetings I was at, and we had to get him in at step six to get him. And I don't know, you know, because he's a private school, I don't know what that equated to what he was making before. But this is, you know, it's, yes, you could take somebody from inside, cover his hours, and you could move somebody, some other coach to coach football, but you're going to lose kids. And make matters worse, there are schools that are very close to us that are highly recruiting him. If one of them gets him, you're going to lose a lot of kids because it's not that far down the road.
So my original question was, is union aware of this for 12?
I don't know if there's any other things that would like to be said.
No, but.
Okay.
John is on, if you want to, I don't know if Marie wanted to ask her or John, if you want to allow that.
No, I, I don't think the union was aware originally. I mean, I know they're aware, as I have talked to them.
Because this is a precedence that has never been set before and can really, I think, have some.
A snowball effect.
Yes. In, in the morale of the entire ABEA. So when you are giving steps and we've had teachers frozen for five years and are never going to make it. This is, this is kind of an important thing. So I wondered if Jamie Petron has been notified. Does anyone know that and gotten any feedback, John? Do you know?
Um, yes, she's been talked to. I've spoken to her since we brought her name up multiple times. I'm going to, I know it's not customary, but since she's.
Can we allow her to talk?
I'm going to give, I'm going to unmute Jamie and let Jamie weigh in on this since it's a pretty big. I agree, it's a, it's a big hiring and.
It can.
When you're offering a teacher position and, and I think she needs to be consulted with. So go, go ahead, Jamie.
Can you hear me?
Yep.
Okay, so yes, I obviously now know about this step 12 hire. Speaking on behalf of the membership, this has never been done before. Knowing how difficult bargaining. Knowing how difficult bargaining has been in the last few years, knowing that we've had teachers with special ed degrees and math degrees hired at step four, no offense at all, I don't know, I don't know him at all. He may be amazing, but I feel like in, in times that we're in, where we don't even know what school's going to look like in the fall, and they're talking about budget cuts and possible layoffs to our members, this, to me, speaking on behalf of my members, is a complete slap in the face to the, to the ABEA. Just hire someone at step twelve is insane to me. I, I, I don't really have, I'm not really sure what else to say, but I think my members would agree with that, and I think it's going to really hurt morale in this district to set this type of precedent.
Okay.
John, and I spoke to Jamie.
Yeah, I just wanted to, thanks Jamie for, I, I spoke with Jamie earlier today, because I knew this was coming up. Obviously, this has been a hot topic widely talked about, and everybody's, that's probably why we have the hundred participants tonight. So, but we are an educational institution, and, you know, I take her opinion very highly. So go ahead, Janine.
I one hundred percent agree with Jamie. This is unprecedented, and I have been in public education for twenty-five years. I have never seen, I've been employed in some part-time or full-time position in five different Macomb County districts. I have never seen a teacher hired higher than step four. Myself, at twenty years of experience, offered step zero. It would be horrible for the morale. It would be, it has nothing to do with this position. It has nothing to do with this gentleman. It has one hundred percent to do that with fairness and equity that we have people who have been frozen, that this is an absolute slap in their face. And I cannot support that. And we, you know, Jamie is one hundred percent right. We're going to be seeing some hard times down the road here that, if it was a math position, and with all due respect, I know someone said step six, but that was step six for math. Math is highly sought after. Science is highly sought after, and special education is highly sought after. They're very hard certifications to fill. And this is two hours of a P.E. program that, you know, we're not saying is not important, but we're saying we have to look at it in the totality of our upcoming school cycle and the massive cuts that we may be faced by, not only the pandemic, but what we were facing prior to the pandemic. I think it's just a plethora of complications and issues that Jamie and Marie are one hundred percent right. I, I one hundred percent agree with them.
John, if I, if I could jump in for just a second, I just want to say that we understand that this is unusual. We do. And that's part of the reason why administration is bringing this before the board this evening, is we want, we wanted to make sure that you were aware, and this is really before the board to make that decision.
Correct. Lisa, Ms. Burke Meyer?
My question was, I was aware of and saw the posting for the coaching position, but has this P.E. portion that he has been offered, I was not aware that there was even a P.E. posting. So are we also going outside of contract bounds by tacking on a P.E. offer with the coaching position? Because I'm unaware that P.E. was ever posted as an open position at Anchor Bay at this point.
Todd, or is that Laura? Sorry.
Go ahead, Laura.
It's the position that was vacated by Coach Powell, so he left us in.
Right, I understand that he taught that, but we've never actually posted, as far as I, as far as I know, the P.E. position. So to be adding it on to the coaching position, I mean, I don't feel like we properly followed our own board policy even, or even possibly ABEA contract by posting, you know, we could have had who knows what other applicants for the P.E. position had it been posted. You know, and like we said, possibly a step one hire or something for a point, for a point five position at this point. And I, I know of personally people that are looking for P.E. at Anchor Bay. So I guess my concern is, is, you know, is this offer even legit?
Yeah, it's a legit offer. We had, we convened a committee. I believe Mr. Moses sat on that committee. The high school principal was on that committee, or athletic director was on that committee, and all of them had brought forth this gentleman as the recommended candidate. So again, this is before the board this evening.
But did we eagerly post the P.E. position or the contracts?
Lisa's right. These two positions do not need to be tied together. Just because they have in the past doesn't mean that the P.E. position, which is the only position that should be brought before the board, the, the coaching position, we do not hire or fire coaches. That is a separate position. We should only be looking at the part-time P.E. position. And Lisa's right, that position should be offered to current staff first.
The, just to, obviously, he's.
I guess I'm wondering, when, when was it posted, and how many applicants did we get for the said posting?
But just, just to clarify real quick, Lisa, and the rest of the board, is, yes, you are, I should have clarified that in the beginning, but that's all we are voting on tonight. The athletic department hires and fires coaches. They can hire him, hire Mr. Gianoni and do that. We're only voting on the part-time teaching, which I'm sure you all know. I just wanted to clarify that. That's what our vote is tonight. So it's not, to those listening, it's not if we vote no, he's not the football coach. It's, this is just about the teaching portion, which, that's, that's what we're voting on. So go ahead, Laura, about Ms. Burke Meyer's question.
So no, this one was not posted. This is a vacancy, though. It was filled with teachers taking a sixth hour, because he vacated it in the spring, and we didn't, you know, we didn't want to post and hire a teacher.
Well, as, as far as I understand, then, if this was not posted, this would be a contract violation for the ABDA, and we can't even vote on this at this point.
So, Mrs. Burke Meyer, could you share with me what article we would be violating in the ABEA contract?
I do not have it ahead of me.
Because I believe this goes to teacher placement, right? Teacher placement's a prohibitive subject of bargaining.
Ms. Petron, Jamie, just to, just to answer this, so that, is this a contract violation that you guys would be looking at?
Well, placement's prohibited, as Laura said, so.
That's what I thought.
However, however, in the past, every position has ever been, has always been posted. So that our members have, you know, can apply for it, or put their name in the hat, if that's something that they are interested in.
So I understand past practice is, you know, fairly important.
I, I would say past practice, yes. You're, you're a hundred percent right, but it is, now whether or not, what you vote on it tonight, but we can vote on it. Is it, was it done right? Doesn't sound like it was done the way it should have been done.
Can I ask another question?
Well.
Is, is it possible that these two hours of P.E. could be absorbed so there were being, at the end of, let's say in August, when the, the positions are assigned, that there wouldn't be a need for any additional halftime position? Or it could, who has teaching, it could have been filled in other ways without the additional cost of hiring a halftime person?
Who's teaching these sections right now when they were vacated?
Sixth hour.
Yeah, two teachers picked up a sixth hour.
And that could continue in the fall, correct, if those teachers wanted to do so?
Um, I don't know. I don't know what the fall looks like. They're working on scheduling now. I, I can't answer that question.
But I think, I think what Maria is saying is that to pay two ex, to pay two extra preps is less expensive than a forty-five thousand dollar hire, correct?
Um, I, you know, I don't have the numbers in front of me, but a top-step teacher doing a sixth hour is about fifteen thousand plus the cost of retirement on that. So it comes in.
What's that?
And real quick, if you take five students, basically, number three.
Okay.
I think we'd have to look outside the five.
You guys are missing in this puzzle is we're losing.
I, I think the.
I think you guys need to look inside the five students. And it's going to be a lot more than that. I mean, you guys, you're not talking about. I agree with you, Ms. Hendershot, I do. They are most important. But I also believe you're going to be laying off more people, because you're going to have less students. And to me, that's a bigger crime than paying this guy money.
I, I think.
You know what I mean?
You tell that to all the teachers who haven't been made whole, that's not going to float with them.
Or coaches that have been coaching loyally for, for years and not moving. Is this P.E. position?
So how do you, how do you guys plan on hiring?
We haven't heard from a couple of other board.
One second, let's, let's, Mike, finish up your comment, then we'll, we'll move to, just, if you guys can mute yourselves, and then unmute when you want to talk, and I'll do it in the order that you guys unmuted, just so we can have some order. Go ahead, Mike.
Okay, so let's, where do we move on from this guy? If, if you don't do him, the, the other candidates that we hired, they weren't here. They all want positions within the school, too. We bring somebody from inside the school, is, that's not going to be nearest qualified. I just, I don't, I don't understand the, the process. If you want to be the best, you got to go out and get the best, and he's the best. He's proved it over and over again. But the problem with the best, it comes with a price. Now, yes, I do agree, teachers are more important, and if we make that decision tonight, I will stand by you guys. You know, it is what it is. I, I think you all know how I'm going to vote. But that being said, if we want to make the school better, you hire the best. And you do what it takes to get them. And, and I understand that teachers, they're going to be upset. If they're upset, that's, I'm, I'm going to own that, because I think in the long run, this is going to be better for everybody.
Okay, Pat, did you have something?
Just a couple of quick comments. Mr. President, you, you referred to this as his resume. This is three bullet points on a piece of paper. I've been asking for eighteen months for resumes, actual resumes. Where's your work?
Can I?
There was a resume included.
Can I hold you up for one second? Because if you didn't get it, that's important. You don't have this?
No.
No. None of you guys do?
I do not.
So it's, it's not going to sway, you know, me one, one way or the other, Mr. President. I, we're not here to talk about his football coaching. You know, that, as we've already discussed, happened somewhere else. I do struggle as well as Marie, Lisa, and Janine with the step twelve position. I struggle that we didn't post this position, and obviously, as a member of the finance committee, and I've already voiced it a little more casual today, that we, we're in dire straits financially. We're expecting anywhere from five hundred to a thousand dollar per pupil funding decrease this year. I, I, I'm looking at other options of what I may have to do, and I, I don't have the money to bring a, a teacher in as, as decorated as he is, and I see it into a, to a, a twelve position, when I've got other teachers here that, that quite frankly, may not survive and make it to next year.
Lisa?
Yeah, I, is this hire, just to clarify, is this like effective immediately or come August?
This hire is for the twenty, twenty, twenty-one school year.
Ms. Hendershot, did you have something you, she's, let me unmute her.
So I guess my, my thought was, I mean, if this is, we're looking forward to next school year, because obviously, you said we've had this, these two sections covered by sixth-hour teachers currently. But we're looking ahead to next school year. I mean, as far as I understand, it's not, you know, slotting, scheduling, all that hasn't even occurred. We don't even know that we need or have this opening. It seems like we're really jumping the gun to hire right now. You know, ahead of that. I mean, of course, this gentleman, in terms of seniority, you know, or at our district, is going to be lowest at this point. But, you know, it, it just seems like this is really jumping the gun to me. You know, to just hire him to possibly go straight to layoff. I, I don't know. That doesn't really sit well with me either, like everybody else has said, among all of the budget issues that we are facing at the moment.
I think, I mean, I believe I'm, like, to that point, Lisa's, I think jumping the gun, I think in a normal circumstance, prior to all the recent issues that have come down, this would have been kind of a run-of-the-mill hiring, and, and it would have been a, a, a good hire. It would help our program, and it would be a, probably a draw for more students. But to possibly displace one of our teachers, or like to Pat's point, and on the finance committee, I know our last meeting was, you know, it's, it's pretty scary what might happen with the funding. I, I would hate, and you know, and after talking to Ms. Petron about the ABEA's, you know, thoughts on this, and the way it was handled, maybe, but I think that's probably what you normally do when you're hiring a football coach. It's just the timing couldn't be worse. He's probably exactly what Anchor Bay needs in the football program, and he would be awesome for us. And maybe we can look in the finance committee and talk to the athletic department and see what, you know, see what's out there. But as far as hiring him as a teacher, you know, I just don't think that that's something that I could get behind either, so. You know, but I think as far as saying that it's, you know, was jumping the gun, I think it was, there was a Hall of Famer coach that builds, that has a history of building great programs, and kids do follow those kind of people. So it's just, what do you do to the people that have been with you for the, for years? And to displace one of them, I just, I can't look at them and, and, you know, and, and tell them that. So, Ms. Hendershot, did you have something to add?
All I want to say is, I want, you know, everybody to understand that this has nothing to do with football. I, I'm separating those issues in my mind. My, my own child plays it. I, I support it. I love it. Aside of that, this is extraordinarily disrespectful to every teacher currently employed at ABEA. And that, I in my heart cannot slap those teachers in the face. This is just, it, it's just not right. It's not fair. I understand all the other circumstances, but we also have to be honest with ourselves, is that there are districts, two of them today, West Bloomfield and one in, in Wayne County, said they're not opening to a full school year next year, and they may not be running any after-school activities. So that's another thing that we have to take, and they, they, you know, surveyed their teachers. Seventy-three percent of their teachers in West Bloomfield do not feel safe returning to school. So I mean, how do you put kids on a football field and hope that they, you know? So there's a whole lot of, like you said, Mr. Drew, unknown factors, finance factors, health factors. I just think we're, we put the cart in, the, the cart in front of the horse right now, and it's just not a great decision to move forward on.
I, I, I would, I mean, I, I just, I don't know if, you know, I, I don't, I agree with a lot of what you said, but as far as, you know, slapping the, I don't think it was meant to.
No, no, I know it wasn't meant for that, but I don't.
And I think the.
It would be offensive to them.
And the football end of it, you have to look at, because, because, let's face it, and we are education, and we, but let's, let's not hide the fact that football draws big.
Extracurriculars are important as well, yes.
And it draws kids, and it draws participation, and it draws all that. So it's something that needs to be looked at, but yeah, I just think at this point, we can't do that to our teachers, and not with the fiscal outlook that we have, so. Anybody else? Mr. Moses?
Just, you know, you can't shrink your way to success. You know what I mean? You can, you're going to be cutting people. You got to find some way to grow this thing. Not one person's come up with one good idea in how we're going to create more money, or more revenue, or more students. I, I don't know what else to say. I don't know where to go from here. Because you obviously aren't going to hire the other two coaches we recommended, because they want positions, too. Now, you can look at other programs that were built. I mean, I don't want to keep going back to, but look at Dakota. They're busting at the seams with kids. They have four thousand kids in their high school, and over a thousand, and a whole separate building just for ninth graders. We don't have that here. We're, we're losing kids. We've got a hundred less coming in than, than there were going out. Sport has a huge part of that, huge part of that. We've got a hundred less coming in than, than there were going out. Sport has a huge part of that, huge part of that.
Absolutely.
And I apologize for, for my passions for this, but he's gonna not only improve football, he's gonna improve every sport that we have. He's gonna, not to mention, he's a fantastic teacher. And he's a mentor to your youth. And he's so many more things than just a football coach, and he's, to get somebody like that is a once-in-a-lifetime opportunity. If you miss it this time, you're not gonna get a second chance. And that's all, you know what I mean? And that's the only reason why I'm pushing so hard is because you're not gonna get a second chance at, at anybody like this.
But let's, and Mike, to that point. Mike, and I don't know, uh, we, we would have to, we could have a, we're gonna be having a Finance Committee meeting, uh, coming up probably in the next week, cause we gotta talk about a lot of things. I mean, maybe it's something we look at and, uh, you know, as I was talking to, you know, Superintendent Woodside before this, we talked about, you know, there's a difference, as we just said a little bit ago, difference between hiring as a teacher and hiring as a football coach. It's my understanding that, you know, he, he's, that, uh, Mr. Gianoni is retired. Maybe he doesn't need the benefits. Maybe we can figure this out another way. And obviously, we're gonna need a football coach. If football does happen, we're gonna need a coach. And do we want the best of the best? Yeah. So let's put our heads together and, and not just call it quits, cause we might not hire him as a teacher tonight. But let's look at what else is, maybe they have, maybe Mr. Battle has. I, I don't know. Todd might be able to weigh in a little bit more on the budget as far as where we could maybe find ways to cut in other areas to be able to do this, you know? Cause it is, it would be a huge hire. Like I said, he's a Hall of Famer from everything I've heard, so let's not, let's try to not make this end tonight in a, we're cutting ties and being done with it. Let's try to find a different way.
Is Mr. Middlestat still on?
What's that, Mr. Moses?
I said, then why don't we table it?
Well, it's not for hiring him as a coach. It's for hiring him as a teacher. So we're gonna follow through with the hiring as a teacher, cause that's what, well, really, there, if there's no motion, it just passes. It just, it just, uh, there is no motion. So we, that's why I had discussion prior to the motion. There was no motion made.
And can I make a motion?
So. Yep.
Now, my comment would kind of follow the rest regarding, it's a money issue.
Well, one second, Mr. Moses, he's, uh, uh, middle, Mr. Middlestat's talking.
So it, it is.
I'll mute.
It is a money issue, but it also is, it's a personality issue in terms of other staff members. We've got loyal staff people. And I hate to have to lay people off, hire a person in May and then lay somebody off in June or in the fall. Generally, generally, we would do these kinda things after planning through the summer on schedules and that and see how things fit together. So it'd be more appropriate uh, at the end, the, end of the year. And, and of course, as you know, from what happened last year, we really need to understand where the enrollment's gonna be at too, so. And this, and the step thing is, is again, I know, I know we offered four, and that's what generally do, and he countered with twelve, but I, I can't see forty-five grand for two hours of work a day, so. Anyway, again, I think it's mostly focused on the, the staff we have and being loyal to the people that have put their time in, in the district, so. Whether it's teachers, uh, support staff or whoever.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Middlestat. Uh, Mr. Moses, did you have, what's that? You go ahead, Mr. Moses.
I just had one last thing, and that's, uh, that's kinda why your, your program's been stuck in less than mediocrity for the last twenty years. You know, doing the same thing over and over again, expecting a different result is the definition of insanity.
I would, I would, I would add comment to that is that I've heard the same speech at least two or three times hiring coaches, so. It's not that we didn't try in the past twenty years to try to get a good coach. It just never, we've had, we've had positive things occur and then we've had failures, so. It's not that we haven't tried or tried to get that position.
And, uh, to this, to that, Mike, I'll just reiterate, we'll, we'll have a Finance Committee, uh, Pat, I'll be talking with Pat after the meeting. Uh, we'll be setting one up and, uh, with Marie, and, uh, we'll, we'll, we'll ask, uh, Mr. Woodside and Mr. Rathbun for some numbers and, and see what is possible, if anything's possible, so. But with that, if there's no motion, what's that?
Can I make a motion to table it? Can I make a motion to table it?
We're, the motion.
There's nothing to table. There's neither a motion, so. Yeah, there's no motion to table, so we're just gonna move on. Cause there was no motion, so there's nothing.
But I can't make a motion.
What's that?
You can make a motion to hire him.
You can make a motion to hire him, or you can make a motion?
I'll, I'll make the motion to hire him.
You wanna make the motion to hire him? Okay, is there a second? All right, seeing no second. There is no motion. So, thank you, Ms. Laura. And we'll move on to, uh, Mr. Rathbun.
Yes. So annually, the food service goes out for a bid, uh, for our bakery goods that we serve during our food service. This year, we did, as we have in the past, we sent out bids and, uh, we received a number of responses. The low bidder in this case was Aunt Millie's Bakeries. Uh, we've used them in the past and have been very happy with the quality of their service. And we are making the recommendation that the board, uh, accept Aunt Millie's Bakeries as our bakery for the twenty twenty-one school year.
I so move.
Support.
Motion by Mr. Middlestat, supported by Mr. Green. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, we'll vote by roll. Ms. Berkmeyer?
Mr. Green?
Yes.
Ms. DeWitt?
Yes.
Middlestat?
Yes.
Mr. Moses?
Yes.
Berkmeyer, yes. Um, Ms. Akavety Hendershot?
Yes.
And Mr. Drew?
Yes. Motion passes. Go to school lunch, school meal prices. Mr. Rathbun?
Thank you, President Drew. Uh, before you, this evening is just a really more an informational item than an action item. Uh, wanted to update the board. Every year, you may remember, we go through the price lunch equity calculation to determine if we need to increase our school lunch prices as required by the USDA. This year, uh, we completed the price calculator and would have had to increase our prices for next year, ten cents on lunches. The good news is that the USDA has also provided for a waiver this year. And the waiver essentially says that if we had a positive fund balance as of December thirty-first, two thousand nineteen, we can opt to not increase the price on our lunches. And that is what we are planning to do. That would be our recommendation to the board, that we will hold our prices firm for the two thousand twenty, twenty-one school year and not increase prices for our students. So just a bit of a good news to let you know, we have performed the calculation, but we also are going to take advantage of the waiver this year and not increase prices.
It's, it's, Steve Middlestate, that's, that's the craziest law is that we've had a fund balance. We, we have a good program yet, yet the law says we had to increase the price in past years. So that's really good news that they're waiving it for us this year.
Yes, Steve, they just started this a couple of years ago, and you're exactly right, because on the opposite end of it, if you're too successful in your food service, you can get a finding for having too much in your fund balance. So they're forcing you to raise the price on your meals, but then penalizing you if your food balance, if your fund balance gets too high. So it's kind of a catch-twenty-two there. So really happy to see these waivers, and I think it's great for our students.
Definitely. Thanks for the information. All right, we'll go to the Bloom Academy lease renewal. Mr. Rathbun? You're the popular guy today. Let's see. Unmute him.
I shouldn't have unmuted. I'm sorry. Hold on here. So, uh, yeah, before you again, this is again, something that should be very familiar to the board. This is something that we renew annually. Uh, we have, uh, the Bloom Academy, um, and they lease our uh, space. The annual rent is a little over seven thousand dollars. And, uh, we are proposing that we will continue this lease with the same group through June twenty twenty, and of course, we will bring this before the board again next year. Um, if it makes sense financially, we will continue to bring this forward. Uh, but before you tonight is extending the lease for one year till June twenty twenty.
Okay, you guys got the rental agreement in front of you. Is there a motion to approve the Bloom rental for the twenty twenty, twenty twenty?
Mr. Pres, Mr. President, before you do that, I wanna clarify with Todd. You're extending this to June twenty twenty-one, correct? Not June twenty twenty?
June twenty twenty. It says the current rental agreement expires in June twenty twenty.
Correct. I'm sorry, Mr. Green, you're right. Twenty twenty-one. Sorry.
No, I just didn't want, I didn't wanna approve your lease for three days.
Uh, for thirty days? Yeah. If I misspoke, I apologize. Twenty twenty-one is correct.
Okay, is there a motion to approve?
I'll make the motion.
Motion by Ms. Hendershot. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Second of my Ms. DeWitt. Any discussion? Seeing none, vote by roll.
Hi, Mr. Green?
Yes.
Ms. DeWitt?
Yes.
Mr. Middlestat?
Uh-oh. We might. Did we lose Mr. Middlestat? They what? Oh. All right, I'll, well, they're joining by phone right now. I guess at McDonald, everything went down, so, uh, let's give them about three minutes and see if they come back. All right, they're logging back on right now, so it'll just be. Okay. Yeah, it's his vote. He's on now? All right, Steve is under Sherri's now, so go ahead, Lisa. You gotta unmute yourself, or I can, we can.
Mr. Middlestat, we're voting on the Bloom lease.
Did you catch the Bloom lease, Steve? Well, he was there. Let's see. Are they muted right now? There she is. She's asked to unmute. We just lost her again. Everything is going way too good. Uh, Steve, are you there?
Maybe you should have him call in versus trying to.
That's what they're doing. They're, they're, uh, they've tried multiple things, but yeah, they're, they're having him call in right now. She was on, but then she didn't have, uh.
Yeah, not that, uh, he called my cell phone, I put him on speaker.
That's what they're, they're doing that right now. They're, uh, Anita's with, um, doing something. Pretty much.
Hey, at least my net connection's stable.
What's that?
At least my internet connection's stable this time.
Nah, it's, it's a little trouble.
A little rocky.
It's a little rocky. I think you're gonna need to call the, uh.
AT&T.
Yeah.
Need some support.
Good luck getting them to come to the house.
No kidding.
Job security, Mike. Job security.
Maybe they should get Comcast. That might work better.
Ooh.
During peak hours.
Yeah.
I haven't.
Come on, I'm connected in the car and it's working better. And I'm on, my God, I'm on, on Star's plan. I don't have no idea what this. And I'm on, my God, I'm on OnStar's plan. I don't have no idea what this is gonna cost me.
Stop bragging.
No, I'm sending you the bill.
How was your dad, Janine?
Here he is. All right.
We're hanging in there, Marie. Good.
Steve?
Yes.
All right. Lisa, we're back, or Ms. Burkmire, we're back in action.
Okay, Steve, we were voting on the Bloom lease, um, for extending it another year. Did you have a vote yes or no?
Yes.
Mr. Moses?
Yes.
Burkmire, yes. Ms. Akavati-Hundershot?
Yes.
And Mr. Darrell?
Yes. All right, and, uh, Mr. Rathbonne will now give us a, up, no, no, we're gonna go to Joe, uh, Mr. McDonald for the graduation update. All right.
Okay, can you hear me?
Yes, sir.
Yeah, I just wanted to give you an update, um, that we, our goal is to, you know, attempt to host a full commencement later this summer. Of course, that, um, we are gonna need to re, um, follow any, uh, executive order or any CDC guidelines. Um, but we are trying to push that date, um, further down, uh, in July, um, and, um, do what we can to host something, uh, at the high school. We did submit, um, a survey and got nearly 300, um, response back from senior parents only. Um, just trying to gather some data on how, how long, uh, we would, uh, they would be interested in, in pushing it out, um, to hold something, uh, more traditional, of course. Governor, uh, executive order permitting and health and safety, uh, permitting. Um, I know it's a, it's a difficult time for our seniors and we're trying to do what we can to, to give them the most traditional experience, um, that we can, uh, if it is within our control. Uh, some of it is not, but I just wanted to, to give an update and then get some input at this time.
All right, is there any questions or comments from the board on the graduation? Um, right. Um, I guess the only question I have, what, what do you want, uh, or what are you guys looking at from the, are you looking for anything from the board when it comes to these events you have planned? I get the social distancing and the, uh, I'm sure you want to have it be limited amount of people. I just want to make sure that we're, if you would like our involvement, you know, obviously I get why, you know, uh, why you want to keep the, uh, amount of people there low, but just wanted to throw that out there.
Uh, well, yeah, initially, you know, we're, we're planning for, um, kind of the better, uh, the good, better, best scenarios. And, and of course, we're praying for the best scenario where we can have as many people and as close to traditional as possible. And of course, um, I'm fully open to, um, whatever role. I'm not sure, you know, what the board, how they, what your feelings on, on this. Everyone has a little bit different, uh, take on the, the virus and, um, in the safety there, uh, therein. But of course, um, I'm definitely open to input and willing to do, to do whatever. And again, it would always depend on what's allowable, you know? We're in a situation right now where, um, it's 10 people that are allowed to gather and, um, that makes it difficult with, um, who we can have there and in, in, in any staff or whatever. But as the governor, um, and things open up, we pray that, um, we can get as many people involved as possible. I know that, uh, you know, we're, we're working with the high school administration, um, and trying to figure out the best way to do it with, um, for the kids, but, um, we certainly want, uh, to get the, uh, we hope for the, the most traditional involvement is normal. So.
I guess the, what I was looking at, and I just asked Mr. Woodside, I, you know, obviously I know he couldn't be here tonight, just the, I've heard of this, you know, what you're doing Sunday, which every, I want to say everything you guys have been doing is awesome. The buses going to the houses, the, I mean, I've gotten great reports from everybody. I have a nephew who's a senior, know a bunch of people in the district senior, so it's, it's great because you're doing awesome. But as far as what you're doing on this Sunday, I didn't know if, and I wanted to hear from the other board members, I, I obviously don't think we should be bringing the whole board there, but I thought maybe depending on how you're doing it, if we would have a representative from the board there and maybe if you're doing like a, if it's a, a, a three hour thing or four hour, maybe one per, you know, whoever would want to come and just, again, I know there's no shaking hands, I know there's none on that, just seeing if, if we want to just show that our support for our seniors. And obviously, the rest of the board members that want to comment if that's. Go ahead, Joe.
No, I was gonna say, yeah, I was in reference to what we're trying to hold, uh, traditional. We did, uh, on their traditional, their last day, the 21st, we went to homes, tried to, to honor them that way with, uh, we didn't, we, we did honor them that way with those yard signs. Um, that was, that was, that was probably the most fun I've had, uh, in months, honestly, going to just a few homes, uh, and being able to, to see the seniors and, and to, you know, keep socially distanced, but to put a sign on their lawn and, 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 and see those graduates. Sunday, what we're, we're trying to do is, um, give a, um, we have some concern that, and the high school, uh, as they plan through this, had some concern that some of the, some of the students may not be around, uh, later in the year, uh, and they would miss out on, on, um, that event. And then if that happened and that was the only thing, they would have nothing. And we thought that would be, um, uh, tragedy. So we were trying to do something really quick as a, um, um, kind of a makeshift, uh, uh, ceremony where they could come across the stage. We've heard from parents clearly that the most important thing to them is to see their son or daughter cross the stage. Um, and, and, and it seems overwhelmingly that they would like to, to, to kick it down the road a little bit and see, um, if we could have the most traditional, um, situation possible. That would be the July, the, the more official graduation. On, on 31st, this Sunday, uh, would not be an official graduation. They would not receive diploma, but they would get, um, we would have a scroll handed to them. There would be a photo opportunity, it'd be in cap and gown. Um, and as of right now, right, we're limited to 10, so we, we could work with whatever, um, however we can do it, we want to focus on the, the kids, obviously, and, and the principal, uh, on that event, but then we would work around with whatever, whatever we could do. Um, you know, I'll be a, a, around if I'm needed and if I'm not, I'll be, I'll be out of the way. So whatever we can do to stay safe, uh, certainly, uh, this is important event, uh, obviously to the school board.
Could I make a suggestion, John?
Uh, sure.
I don't know if it's feasible, possible, I'm not a techie, um, to have a screen behind the students and project zooms of all of us on the screen behind the students or off of the side. So maybe you can, I know we can't traditionally shake their hands like we normally would, but maybe to take turns congratulating them, you know, one person, I don't know, just, I'm just thinking outside the box, I don't know.
No, I, it's, we're, that's, I'll get with Joe and I'll call you guys after this. I just, more or less, the, I think it's great, I don't, doesn't need to be a big drawn out thing, it doesn't, we don't need to be involved at all. I just wanted to put it out there, uh.
Right.
Having the seniors that I know, having those parents that I know, and I'm sure the rest of you know, uh, as board members, you know, they're asking where's, you know, making sure that we know what's going on and what is happening with them. So I think what the administration and what everybody's doing is great. Uh, so I just, I'll talk with you afterwards, Joe, and I'll call the
Absolutely.
members and, and we'll see what is feasible, what's not. Obviously, the, the point of the day is the seniors, the students, and that's what it's about. Uh, just wanted to make sure that the seniors know the board is fully behind them and, and the parents know that. So, and that we know what's going on and, uh, it's good for us to know. And I, because I hear there's, so for Sunday, they're gonna walk across the stage and then you guys are giving them some kind of a gift. And now this is for a lot of the military kids who are leaving, we're making sure that we hit those kids and, uh, before they leave, so. Okay.
Yes, absolutely, Mr. Darrell.
All right. Thank you for that update, uh, Joe. Onto, well, and then I guess you just said, so the July, just to put it out there so everybody knows, the July 25th, you have it's tentatively, tentatively slated to happen outside on the football field? And then if it rains, the rain day is gonna be inside on Sunday, the 26th?
Yeah, or the next day if we can, uh, try to keep it outside to, to, with the rain date. Um, and if it's not available, I mean, we're, we're trying to be open to any contingency, knowing that, again, even on that date, it might not be good enough. We're, we're, we are sorting through the data as well, uh, from the survey. We got a lot of great feedback and a lot of people were, were open to, you know, July or August. Um, so, um, you know, we're, we're doing the best we can to honor these kids that, um, got something, you know, really important, uh, taken from them. Um, and we're doing what we can to, to, um, to make it as, as traditional as possible.
Perfect. Thanks for all your work and all the administration work. Uh, Mr. Rathbonne, back to you for the severance plan update.
Yeah, so, um, we talked about this at the last board meeting. Um, we did not, we had an original target of 25 teachers and administrators. Um, we felt like that was, uh, the number we needed to target in order to make this fiscally viable for the district. Uh, unfortunately, we only had two administrators and 10 teachers opt into the plan. So quite frankly, less than half of what we were targeting. Um, certainly, we believe that the COVID-19 had a lot to do with that. Um, we also feel that, you know, this is a good thing for, for our kids, you know, in terms of being able to retain our, our tenured teachers, our most experienced teachers. And, you know, it says something about Anchor Bay that it's, it's a pretty good place to work. Um, but that being said, uh, after running the numbers, we looked at, you know, kind of those individuals that we think that will retire no matter what, or we're planning to retire no matter what. We're comparing that to what we would have, um, you know, incentivized people to retire and the cost of that incentive, the $65,000 per person. After running the numbers and looking at the savings, there's really kind of a negligible, uh, savings coming to the district. Uh, we calculated it slightly under $5,000 coming back to the district. Uh, if we do nothing, um, you know, it'd be about the same as if we do the severance plan. So it's our recommendation to the board, uh, that the board take action this evening, to essentially rescind the offer of the severance plan, uh, because it's just not financially viable for the district. It isn't going to provide any sort of financial gain for the district to provide such.
Okay. So is there a motion to rescind the, uh, offer of the severance plan?
I'll make that motion.
Motion by Mr. Green, is there a second?
I'll second.
Second of my Mr. Witt. Any discussion? Seeing none, uh, vote by roll. Ms. Burkmire?
Uh, Mr. Green?
Yes.
Ms. Witt?
Yes.
Mr. Middlestat?
Yes.
Mr. Moses?
Yes.
Uh, Burkmire, yes. Uh, Ms. Akavati-Hundershot?
Yes.
And Mr. Darrell?
Yes. Motion passes. Thank you for that. Uh, the refunding bond amendment.
Yeah, so, um, as you may remember from our last meeting, we asked the board to approve a refunding, uh, bond resolution for 92,000, 92,500,000. Um, it came to our attention during a call with our financial advisor that they had made an, an error in the amount that we can refund. We're able to refund roughly $5 million more. Um, it makes sense from a financial standpoint to do so. So we're just asking a very simple amendment tonight for the board to amend their prior resolution to say the district may refund up to 97,500, 97,500,000. So it's just in increasing the prior amendment by roughly $5 million.
$5 million. All right, is there a motion to approve the amendment as presented?
I'll make the motion.
Motion by Ms. Hendershot, is there a second?
I'll second.
Second of my Mr. Witt. All right, any discussion? Seeing none, we'll vote by roll.
Uh, Mr. Green?
Yes.
Ms. Witt?
Yes.
Mr. Middlestat?
Yes.
Mr. Moses?
Yes.
Burkmire, yes. Ms. Akavati-Hundershot?
Yes.
And Mr. Darrell?
Yes. Motion passes. All right, middle school handbook changes or student handbook updates, uh, Mr. McDonald?
Uh, yes, I just, um, have recommendations from our middle school, um, administration, uh, would like to change their handbook, uh, just to kind of summarize those for you. Um, you got two columns, you got the current language on your left, you got the proposed change on the right. And, um, you know, the, the first one pertaining to cellphone, uh, they want to, um, uh, add in, uh, some additional, or actually change the, the, um, discipline from, reduce it from suspensions to detentions and kind of, as you can see, uh, reduce that, um, progression, um, at the middle school level. The, the second, um, issue is they have a demerit system, which, uh, as students misbehave, um, they become, um, ineligible for some of the reward or big trips, um, currently, uh, trips like Cedar Point or Washington, et cetera. And they would like to include the dances, um, with that. Um, you know, typically, um, if you're suspended, um, it doesn't automatically exclude, exclude you. You need to, to have more than just a suspension. Um, and they have a system where they would like to include the dances to that. They feel like, you know, that some of the students that are at the dances are, um, um, have caused them some trouble and they would like the demerit system to be more reward, uh, to be, to be at the dances. The third item there talks about, uh, this, that same demerit system. Right now, uh, sixth graders get a five week grace period. So if they have discipline in their first five weeks, it doesn't count towards their demerits. They still have the discipline, but it doesn't count towards the demerits. They'd like to change that to three. And and the fourth, uh, in the fourth, uh, situation, um, they're adding the words, um, to reflect some of, some of the changes where they would like to add vaping, just to kind of update, um, it as a, uh, major infraction. This would all go, uh, as part of the, um, schoolwide trips and dance program. Uh, and they wanted to then be, uh, add the word dance to it so that it would coincide with, um, the number two and adding dances to that system. And the fifth item, the fifth item is, um, a current practice where, um, currently at both high school and middle school, uh, with a student is, uh, suspended for those infractions there like vaping. Um, it could be, uh, tobacco or it could be alcohol, things like that. This is really driven by vaping, um, where if they attend a teen intervene class with their, family, uh, their parent, uh, that, that suspension, uh, may be reduced, um, for, uh, them serving that, that, um, in educational program, uh, against the baby. Uh, these were recommended by your middle school administration. I spoke to both Mr. Tonah and Mr. T D in regards to these, um, situations. So if you have any questions, I'd be glad to answer them for them.
All right, is there a motion to approve the changes to the middle school handbook for 2020, 2021 as presented?
I'll make that motion.
Motion by Mr. Green, is there a second?
I'll second.
Motion by Ms. Burkmire, is there any discussion? Vote by roll.
Mr. Green?
Yes.
Ms. Witt?
Yes.
Mr. Middlestat?
Yes.
Yes.
Mr. Moses?
Yes.
Berkmeyer, yes. Ms. Akavati-Hundershot?
Yes.
And Mr. Darrell?
Yes. All right, and Mr. McDonald, we're going to the field trip.
Okay, uh, thank you, Mr. Darrell. Um, this, uh, before you is, um, a request to replan or plan next year's Washington field trip. This is the annual trip, uh, the one that did not take place this year for these eighth graders, but they would like to begin that, that planning again, um, obviously, uh, um, safety permitted with the virus, but, um, it does take a, a, a pretty long time to, for the process and for them to begin planning. They want to, uh, get a jump on it so that when we return in the fall, they can, they can introduce it as an option to parents, um, and continue to plan for it, uh, with the same travel companies that they've been using, um, in the past.
Okay, is there a motion to approve the middle school north, middle school south, planning field trip to Washington DC for eighth graders as presented?
I'll make the motion.
Motion by Mr. Witt, is there a second?
I'll second.
Seconded by Ms. Berkmeyer, is there any discussion? Seeing none, vote by roll.
Mr. Green?
Yes.
Mr. Witt?
Yes.
Mr. Middlestat?
Yes.
Mr. Moses?
Yes.
Berkmeyer, yes. Ms. Akavati-Hundershot?
Yes.
And Mr. Darrell?
Yes. Uh, before we get into the union communication, uh, Anita, is there a way, right now, there's, we still have 80 participants, we have a second open forum for public comments. Is there a reasonable way that we could do that if anybody had to, wanted to talk?
They can either go back in and click on that form, or in the lower right-hand corner, you see reactions. If someone wanted to do that, they could put a thumbs up and then you could call on them and Tim and I can keep scrolling.
Okay. So just to put that out to everybody that's on here, we have, uh, coming up will be the open, second open forum. So as Ms. Bannock said, uh, you can go down to the lower right where it says reactions, just hit that, you'll have a thumbs up and, uh, they'll let me know who's, uh, if there's anybody there that wants to speak.
There is one other way too, John. I just want to point out if it's easier for people, they can go in the chat box as well and put their name and address and their topic and you can call on them for that too.
Perfect.
But Tim and I will keep monitoring.
Awesome.
Is there not a, a backup system for the district server? Uh, I have it in my board packet right after the Washington trip.
Yes, there is, that's me.
Yeah, I, that, I, what I was doing,
But that's for the-
Yeah, I was just-
You're jumping ahead, okay.
Well, not jumping ahead, just letting people know a way to-
I understand, okay. I thought we, I thought I missed something, like I clicked out or something.
No, we're going to union communication now with, uh, Ms. Jamie Petron, so we'll unmute her.
Can you hear me?
Yep.
Yes.
All right, so, um, first of all, I just want to clarify, I was, oh, I thought I was put on the spot, but I wasn't really expecting to be called under in your discussion. Um, you know, the ABA recognizes that the coaching position and the teaching position are two separate things. So I want to make it very clear that what I stated about the teaching position has nothing to do with, with the ability of the coach. We understand, um, that good programs build, you know, a lot of things for our district, including student enrollment, so I just want to make that clear. Um, and I do want to thank the board for recognizing the loyalty and sacrifice of our teaching staff and respecting their, respecting their commitment to Anchor Bay. Um, I think that it, it just means a lot for all of you to, to, um, be supportive of that. Um, I also wanted to mention that I'm amazed daily by our staff. I think they're knocking it out of the park with the teaching, um, remotely. I mean, I think all of our staff is, the teachers are just, they're doing a really great job and I continue to appreciate that. Looking into the future, of course, we're facing the unknown. Um, we're not sure of the budget. We know where we were before all of this happened. Um, we're looking at possible layoffs, so I would continue to advocate for our members that we are clear on board policy regarding layoffs, so staff is very clear. Um, specifically regarding overall rating, um, are we going to be looking at numerical values or just overall rating of our staff? Evaluations matter, communications matters, and I just, um, appreciate the, um, collaboration and, and hope that that continues, um, as we look into the fall, not really knowing what's going to be happening, so. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Is there any other union communication from the district, any other union reps on here? If you do, please speak up. I'm not seeing any thumbs. All right. We'll go to planning for the future, Ms. Bannock. Uh, the backup server award recommendation.
Yeah, as you just mentioned a few moments ago, uh, we are making a recommendation for the backup servers. This is part of the bond fund. We did do an RFP, wrote to you about that prior to the RFP going out. The bids were just received and opened, um, on May 19th. Tim and Andy actually collected all of the bids and went through them. And we are recommending, uh, the backup system to Inacomp Technical Services in the amount of $38,072. Dollars.
All right. Is there a motion to award the district server backup system for them in the amount of $38,072?
I'll make the motion as presented.
Motion by Ms. Hendershot, is there a second?
I'll second.
Seconded by Mr. Witt, is there any discussion on this? Seeing none, we'll vote by roll.
Mr. Green?
Yes.
Mr. Witt?
Yes.
Mr. Middlestat?
Yes.
Mr. Moses? Mr. Moses?
Yes.
Berkmeyer, yes. Ms. Akavati-Hundershot?
Yes.
And Mr. Darrell?
Yes. All right, motion passes. All right, I don't see any open forum. Make one more scroll. All right. For the consent agenda. The last meeting, as presented. Is there a motion?
I'll make the motion to approve the consent agenda and the financial reports as presented.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Seconded by Mr. Witt. Vote by roll.
Mr. Green?
Yes.
Mr. Witt?
Yes.
Mr. Middlestat?
Yes.
Mr. Moses?
Yes.
Berkmeyer, yes. Ms. Akavati-Hundershot?
Yes.
And Mr. Darrell?
Yes. All right, motion passes. Superintendent comments, uh, our assistant superintendent, Mr. Todd Rathbun, is gonna handle this tonight.
Thank you, President Drew. Yeah, I'll be filling in for Leonard tonight as he had a family situation that he needed to attend, so. So, uh, I believe, hopefully, uh, is there a way for us, Anita or Tim, to put the, uh?
Yep, Tim's putting the slides up in just a second, so give him just a second.
I'll wait for the slides to come up and then I'm gonna talk a little bit about some of our points of pride and what we've been doing lately in the district. Tim, can I have you go, yeah, to the first slide, thank you very much. So there's been a lot going on. It's been talked about a little bit earlier this evening, but, uh, last week, we celebrated our seniors' last day of school. Over 50 staff members boarded more than 20 buses to visit all of our 472 Anchor Bay High School graduates. Each student received a lawn sign, notepads, window clings, and a hearty congratulations. Uh, this event even made it onto Channel 7 News, so it was a very successful event for us. And, uh, we also had 46 of our graduates earn a GPA of 4.0 or higher. Each of these students will receive honor stalls and the district made special summa cum laude lawn signs for them to display in their yards, and you can see an example of that right here. Our next slide is our top two students. Deanna Zarwicki earned a 4.488 cumulative GPA and Courtney Kramer earned a 4.401 GPA. Our two top graduates this year. Great job, ladies.
Awesome.
Our next slide is Anchor Bay High School is very proud to announce that two students have been placed on the Macomb County academic team, Blake Burdick and Ben Seeley. Both received the 2020 Macomb County All Academic Award and now have also been placed on the Macomb County Academic Dream Team. This achievement caps off his successful year for Blake. Earlier, you may remember, he was selected as the guitar player for the MSBOA All-State Ja- Jazz Ensemble. Received the Class AA First Runner-Up Best Soloist Award and many other musical accomplishments for him. Congratulations. Ben Seeley has also had a very successful high school career. He was part of the Anchor Bay varsity football team who earned first-team all-state academic team. Ben also passed the Microsoft Specialization Certification in Word, Excel, and received National Occupational Certificate in General Management and Accounting in Mr. Middlestat's Management and Computerized Accounting Course. Last but not least, Deanna Zarwicki is a commended student in the 2020 National Merit Scholarship Program. That means that Deanna ranked in the top 50,000 highest scores on the PSAT slash NMSQT nationally. Over 1.5 million students took the test last October. So great job to all three of you. Our final slide we have for you tonight is a, a fun event that our Transportation Department did back on May 14th. All of our bus drivers, uh, decorated their buses. They drove their rounds to honk and wave at students. It was a great morning with lots of participation from our students and parents, and I believe this was also, uh, broadcast on Channel 4, I believe. And a really cool event. Really, really nice to see all of the participation from students in our, in our community. So that's all I have for tonight, uh, in terms of superintendent comments.
All right, thank you, that was-
All right, thank you.
Uh, now we'll move into board comments. Start with Marie.
Um,
You're on the top, so on the MyScreen at least.
Oh, good. Well, I just want to thank, uh, all the staff. I know that, uh, the, the challenges with the, uh, online learning and also meeting the needs of students who don't have the technology available that I believe has, have been great, but very proud of all of our teachers and support staff in central administration who have worked very, very hard to make all this possible. Um, I also, um, I would like to comment on something that was said about exploring ways, yes, to increase our enrollment, um, and that things haven't been done before. The Mandarin, um, the Mandarin program was an extreme, extremely viable way of helping us to bring in additional students and additional rent revenue. And, uh, we all know that that was a very rocky path, uh, that, uh, did not go the way we all wanted it to go. Our purpose from day one was to bring in additional revenue, uh, that would ultimately give us a stronger foundation, uh, in the higher enrollment and would make it possible for us to be competitive. It's very hard to be the lowest-funded district, get the least amount of money you can get in the state of Michigan and still remain competitive. And, um, we're going to suffer that loss, probably one and a half million dollars, that that Mandarin program has now ended. And that added to the other challenges. It's, it's gonna be great. I just want to reiterate that this was nothing personal with this, uh, coach. I'm sure he is phenomenal, but we know what we can afford and we have rough times ahead. And we also have to be fair to those who, um, the, uh, their own needs and financial challenges in the district's financial challenges have to be taken into account. So I'm certainly, uh, hoping that, um, we can go back to the drawing board and perhaps, as Mr. Drew suggested, come up with some alternate plans or, um, offers in general, and I'm sure that we will be looking at ways to, um, make, as always, the fiscal decisions which are going to be keeping us uh, or bringing us closer to where we need to be, but also putting the needs of kids first. And, um, that's often really challenging to do. A majority of this board has not had to experience that. And it's very tough when you know there are great things that are happening out there and all of a sudden we can't do them anymore because we simply don't have the money. So, um, I just think that we have to be fiscally responsible and we have to put the needs of all kids first, so, uh, and I believe that this, uh, that's where we're at right now. So I want everyone to stay safe and, um, I just want to commend Central Office for all the efforts in trying to, uh, bring a somewhat normal graduation, uh, activities to an absolutely, uh, abnormal situation for these kids graduating my school is probably a big, biggest event of their lives, so I know that they're working very hard to achieve that. So I just want to thank everybody and tell you to stay well.
All right.
I'm done.
Thank you, Mr. Witt. Mr. Moses?
Yes, um, I just wanted to, you know, thank all the graduates, congratulate them all for doing such a great job. And I thank administration and teachers, um, you guys are the heart and soul of this thing. Um, one thing I wanna, I want to say is, uh, I'm not gonna apologize for trying to bring that coach in, um, because I do believe that it would have helped the budget. And, Mr. Witt, I don't, I don't hold anything against you or anybody on this board. Um, you guys are all highly respected people and I like all of you. But that being said, I'm gonna be passionate and I'm not gonna leave one stone unturned when we're talking laying off teachers and administrators and staff and my favorite people in this entire community, then I'm not gonna leave any stone unturned, so.
We never have any-
I'm gonna go back to the drawing board, um, and I hope we all take a, a, what's that?
Go ahead.
What, what did you say?
Nothing.
Just, go ahead, Mike.
Oh, okay, so, just like I said, it's, we're gonna, I'm gonna do everything I can and I, we're gonna work together, we're gonna get through this. And, uh, again, I do, I do appreciate your guys', uh, perspective. Am I disappointed? Yes. Um, but I do understand everybody's position, but am I gonna keep fighting? Absolutely. Um, other than that, you guys, uh, have a great night, that's all I-
All right. Ms. Berkmeyer?
Um, I just had the opportunity, um, the last few weeks, and I know it's still an ongoing, um, thing, but to help pack the lunches that are going out to students, um, I've enjoyed doing it. It's actually been a lot of fun. Um, and I want to thank all of our staff from, I want to say probably every single department. There's been people um, who have volunteered across Anchor Bay, um, to come and help do that, um, get that done for our families and our kids in our community, um, and that's a great thing. Um, congratulations. Congratulations to our graduates. I know this year is not what anybody has expected. You know, a couple months ago, none of us would have imagined what was on the horizon. And I'm sorry that this, you know, has unfortunately unraveled into derailing your expectations, you know, of what, what usually comes at the end of a senior year. It's unfortunate, and I really do feel for you guys. Additionally, you know, our staff across the board is going above and beyond, whether it's bus parades, teachers reaching out to students daily sometimes, teachers putting signs in their kids' yards, senior visits, Zoom sessions. We have an incredible staff across the board from all departments, and I thank every one of you for your part and what you've been doing to engage and reach out to our students and our families. And as far as the, the hiring situation this evening, I definitely appreciate the accomplishments of Mr. Gianoni. He certainly has a lot of them. Unfortunately, it just does not sit well with me to have to, to hire for a position we've never posted for and, and offer it along with another position, especially at a, at a Step Twelve. And I think we've talked that position, so I'm not gonna keep telling on it. But, you know, it's, it's a, it's a timing issue, but it's, it's also a little bit of a loyalty issue. So to our, to our current staff, so that's important to me. And I stand by my decision on that. Other than that, I hope everybody's staying safe. And tries to enjoy this time if you're a family with a senior graduate as best as you can and in your own way. And hope everybody goes into the summer healthy and safe.
All right. Steve, Mr. Middlestat, sorry. Let me see if he's, unmute him. Mr. Middlestat? All right, we might have lost him for a minute. Mr. Green?
Hey, John, I've got a couple of things on my list. The first one probably goes to Todd. This past four, four to six weeks, we had some issues with coaches paying, coaches being paid. Has that been resolved to their satisfaction?
We're working on that right now. We have been looking at a number of different data points on that. We've surveyed a number of the schools here in Macomb County to kind of see what they're doing. Typically, our coaches aren't paid until the payroll in June. So we anticipate that we will have a decision by then and will comply with the timeframe that we have traditionally paid, paid our coaches.
All right. Very good. Thank you, sir.
Yes.
John, somebody reached out to me just before the meeting started, and so I don't have exact dates, but I've been hearing, this is the third call I've got, that there's some of our meetings haven't been posted to our YouTube channel or to our, you know, to the Anchor Bay School District website. Are we behind in posting meetings?
As far as I know, the meeting you're, you're speaking of, and I've been, I've gotten multiple calls on it in is the evaluation meeting. I was, and I think Ms. Bannick's still on here. I was informed that there were some technical difficulties that night. Whether that's, you know, that, that's what, I looked into it at the time, but if that's the meeting you're talking about, I am not aware of another meeting that's not on there. I can go on there and look. But I could look into it after this, this meeting. I haven't, that's the only meeting that's been brought to my attention. That's not on, but I, I don't, I'll go and look at them, see what's on there.
Yeah, I appreciate that. If, if that's the issue with that particular meeting, we need to post a statement about that because people are looking for that particular meeting as well as some others.
I guess the, the, what I would ask, and I, I know the one I talked to was I don't know if there was really that much to that meeting. When you say you want something posted, what would you, the posted of highly effective was, was that's out there, what, what would you want?
If, if we can't produce the, the video from the meeting, we need to make a statement to that effect on there that there were technical difficulties and that video is not available.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay. And the last one I have might actually possibly default to Joe. I, I had a couple of parents reach out to me, and they've expressed some, I guess dissatisfaction is the right word that I'll, I'll use. In particular, they've got junior year students that had kind of set goals to raise their GPAs in an effort, obviously, to apply to colleges and possibly be accepted in the fall of their senior year. And, you know, some of these students, you know, around March thirteenth, when we froze grades, had grades that they, you know, worked really hard to achieve, you know, for the, I guess, the sixty days of the semester. And I want to understand the grading and what's happening and what kind of other options we have. And again, this obviously affects these junior-level students and their admissions to, to college. My son's a junior, and I sat him down before this year started and told him this was his most important year for grades as far as, you know, sure, there's freshmen and sophomore that come along, but the universities are gonna be looking for, you know, a trend, and if you're trending on the up, you know, you're a three-point in your sophomore year, now you're a three, five, three, six, three, seven in your junior year. This one particular parent reached out to me today, and she's, she's upset that essentially all of her, her students' efforts for the first sixty days of this semester are likely gonna result in a credit, no-credit situation. And the young man was a three-one, three-two type student and was carrying probably a three-six, three-seven in an effort to try to get into that green college in East Lansing. And she expressed some concerns that she feels like her grades are gonna end up, his grades are gonna end up being credit, no-credit for the entire second semester. And I guess I just need some clarification, just break down a lot, if that's accurate, and, you know, how, if anything, that affects the student's GPA.
Sure. I mean, I know that obviously this, this is a nationwide issue, not just an Anchor Bay issue. And that was part of our continuity of learning plan where, you know, we decided to make a, the second semester be a credit or incomplete situation based on the fact that, you know, kids would not finish their second semester, and they were about three quarters of the way through their third quarter. Typically, your semester grade impacts your grade point average. Those are the things that I can, can tell you. And I know that from everything that I've heard throughout the, throughout the, the state and the county is that this is not something unique to not even Michigan, but colleges are well aware of the situation. And in terms of students getting credit or no credit or incomplete, I mean, they're, they're aware that it's due to a COVID situation. And, and I believe they'll take it into consideration, but I, I'm sure that I can't speak for every, every college out there or program. But, but that is, that's currently the way our continuity of learning plan is written.
And Mr. Green, I'd like to speak to that a little bit. We have been in discussions about being able to indicate on the transcript that, you know, the credit is being issued as a part of the COVID nineteen plan that we had. So that should be clear on the transcript that is set up, sent out to any college or university. Additionally, this was really an equity issue, and, and we understand that there are going to be some folks that this cuts the wrong way for, and some, some folks that this cuts better for. If you had a bad GPA that was going to bring your, your GP, or bad grades that were gonna bring your GPA down, you know, you benefit from it. So it's gonna cut both ways, but it was really a fundamental issue of equity for us. We not, we know that not every single person in our district has the same access to computers and the same access to Internet and so forth. And so, you know, in keeping with the governor, we didn't want to penalize, and, and it certainly was not our intent to penalize or hurt anyone. That's certainly what we did not want to do, but for us, it was really, we thought, the most equitable way to handle it.
Pat, just to yeah, that was a, the continuity of learning plan at the, I think, the last meeting, and they, you should have it. We sent it, it was sent out, and that was with collaboration with the ABA and multiple other places. And I've talked to that same parent, and I get the concerns, and, you know, you, you hear the concerns on both sides as Mr. Rathbun says. But the problem is, and I think every district's having it, is, is how to, how to do that grading as far as. Now, I was gonna ask, and since we're talking about it right now, this parent made a comment that, and I know it was talked about when we talked about the continuity of learning, but that students would have the choice to end the year with the grade point they had when this thing started. They were under the understanding that some school districts are doing that. Is that something that you've heard of? Because I didn't hear that others, I didn't know it was talked about, but I haven't heard of anybody doing, are they doing that in places?
Yeah, I've, I've heard a couple of different districts are doing it. I heard a little bit about Plymouth Canton. However, I didn't have a chance today to look into their plan. But I have heard that some districts have gone in a slightly different direction rather than credit, no-credit. They've given some options to their students. But again, I can't, I can't speak to, you know, the number that I have because I honestly haven't researched it.
Patrick's right. It's, it's across the board, John, but, you know, in a lot of these districts, I'll be honest with you. In a lot of these districts where they're providing grades, it's because they're already one-to-one. They already have a lot of experience with a hybrid or mixed media education. And, and so they're, they were frankly more prepared in that regard. So there are some districts that have moved forward. I would say the vast majority are not providing a grade.
Okay.
Question, I don't know if we can, allowed to chat at this point.
I mean, I'm not gonna talk and then say you can't, so go, what?
I guess my, my, my thought on that was, because I know to, to go and backdate things right now would, you know, potentially be unfair for people that might have participated to raise their grade and haven't or something. But my only thought was, would there, is there a possibility or a way to work it that if we added it, our plan at this point, to say what your grade was as of March thirteenth, you could carry that through if you wanted to instead of the credit, no-credit? Or is that, I mean, I don't know. Is that a possibility at all that we could choose to approve? Or is that for some reason not feasible?
I, I know what the times of the talks, like to Todd's point of the, the equity and the, the class rankings and the governor's executive order that states, no, you know, no student can be negatively effective. There's just so many things to it, and with us not being a one-to-one district right now, I mean, I guess Todd could, could answer it better, but all the conversations I was involved in in, in talking to other districts and what they're doing. And I would imagine that these colleges, I mean, this is something that, like, is not obviously just an Anchor Bay issue. And those students are, I would imagine, gonna be able to have some sort of a, I would hope that colleges would understand that, and especially if the students, a sophomore or a junior, you know, they're gonna have next year, and they're gonna have, you know, future years to show what they can do. I mean, I, I don't know. It's, it's a, I understand the frustration on the parents, but, boy, it's just not a good answer.
John, can I speak to the college side of it since I do?
Sure.
I mean, seventy-five, I, for us, that's seventy-five to a hundred students a year into local and out-of-state colleges. And I get direct communication on a daily basis from my colleges. So I can tell you that green school and that blue school have already sent out emails to all of us college advisors indicating that they are taking letters of recommendations from teachers and professors, especially for kids who are in dual enrollment programs, over GPAs. They're looking at semesters prior to COVID nineteen, kind of like locking their GPAs into place and saying, this is where you were, you know, at the end of your sophomore year or at the beginning. They're looking, they're taking the, most of my schools have told me they are looking at the highest GPA that they have attained to date. And look, and they have set aside a good chunk of their admittance requirements to allow students, even for scholarship purposes, to have alternate means of obtaining not only admissions but scholarships. So all of our representatives, whether it be Western, Eastern, you know, you name it, they've all said they are making accommodations based on COVID nineteen.
Now, is that something, I'm sorry to Pat, but with, with Pat bringing that up, and it's a great point, and that parent, and I'm sure there's multiple other parents thinking that, is that something that those people wouldn't mind you making those letters and that information, something that we can either send out to our parents or even just put on our
Well, there's, there's the Michigan College Access Network, MCAN, that can probably pull that data together for the district. So Todd, you might want to connect with MCAN, Jamie Jacobs up in Lansing, who, she works with all the college advisors and counselors, to pull together just a, a random sampling of how schools are processing incoming seniors and the accommodations that they're making.
Yeah, I mean, I think college, colleges recognize what's going on, and I think they're being
And they're all fighting for students. I'm gonna be honest with you.
That's true too. That's true too. So there's a lot of
Coming to the fall, yeah, you know, you got colleges that are saying, if we don't do something on campus, we're losing kids to the school sitting next to us.
There's a lot of accommodation. In fact, I saw, I saw, I, I think in California where they are no longer looking at GPA for the next two years of admittance. It's just not a factor any longer.
They're not even looking at SAT scores. I understand that students aren't able to take the SAT scores. They're letting students take their AP exams at home. They're looking at other measures of looking at their performance. So there are so many waivers that they're looking at from both an academic side and a financial side to get students access to college. They need those students. So they're, they're willing to work with them.
Perfect. That's good. You brought it up, Pat, and that's something, we just need to get that information out to our parents. Sorry, Pat. Go ahead.
That's all I've got, John. Thanks. Thank you, everybody, for jumping in on that because I know it's real important.
We just wanted to hijack your board comments.
That's cool. I'm good with it. That's all I got.
Ms. Hedershot?
Well, everybody has pretty much covered all of the bases, you know. Thank you to our teachers and our, our staff, the, the bus drivers, the, the kitchen staff, everybody who has pulled together for such a concerted effort to fin, to bring this, you know, very traumatizing situation for, you know, our kids and our staff to some kind of, I don't even know if I can use the word normalcy, but a new normal for now. And I appreciate everything that the administration has done. And I think we're, you know, in a good, good place, and as long as we have Plan A, B, and C come the fall, because you, you know, they, they're telling us to hope for the best, plan for the worst, so that we're not behind the eight ball come September is my goal. And I really do appreciate all the long hours that people may think that you're working because you're at home less, but in reality, we are probably working twice as hard now than we ever have. So, thank you.
All right, I'll try, Mr. Middlestat? All right, we might have lost Mr. Middlestat. Same thing as Ms. Hedershot, is you guys covered everything. Congratulations to our graduates. Obviously, this is, as it's been said, it's a crazy year for them. What a, what a shame. But I think it's also adding a whole new, unique experience for them on this, and it's something that they'll be telling stories for years of, of their, the class that went through this. And the pictures that you guys and the administration, staff, teachers, bus drivers, everybody's doing those. Those pictures and videos are gonna be talked about for years and years. So it's great to see this district coming together. So I want to thank all the teachers, all the hard work they're putting in, all of our staff, our admin, you know, our superintendent, he's got some stuff going on in his family right now, but he's, I was on the phone with him for at least a couple hours today. He set it aside for a minute, which is, you know, admirable. So, and just everything that everybody's been doing, as far as the, the code and just everything that everybody's been doing. As far as the, the coach, Mike, I, I, I love your heart. You know, you and I have had a lot of conversations about how to bring more money into this district. I look forward to joining forces with you and going to Lansing and lobbying those representatives to get us more money. We'll start with our state rep. I mean, it's, I know that they're behind us. It's just hard to, to get it, but there's, there's got to be ways to do things and to increase our funding or, you know, obviously the whole state's in, in trouble right now with this, but we'll figure things out. And I wouldn't close a door on Coach Gianoni yet. Let's have a finance committee meeting. Let's meet. Let's see what, see if there's anything that we can do to keep a guy like that. I think he, you know, I think he's been around the game long enough and teaching long enough to know that this wasn't personal. This wasn't about football. This was just about respecting our teachers. And he teaches loyalty from what I hear to all the teams he's had. And that's what to what Ms. Berkmeier said, we showed loyalty to every one of our teaching staff tonight. So with that, I want to thank again, and also Ms. Bannick and Mr. Sizemore and Mr. Case for getting these buildings ready to have us, because even though they said fully virtual, we all showed up. And, well, a lot of us showed up. And you know, Ms. Bannick and Mr. Sizemore for, for keeping these meetings, you know, going and getting all the public involved. So with that, I'll stop talking and motion to adjourn.
I'll make the motion.
Motion by Ms. Heder shot, seconded by Green, Mr. Green, will cheat. All those in favor? All right. Meeting adjourned. Thank you, everybody.